Two minutes till broadcast, one minute till streaming. One minute till broadcast, we are now streaming.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Good afternoon Durham. Welcome to City Hall. Online and in person, I'm sorry. We will call this meeting to order at 1:00 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton. Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
And Councilmember Rist.
He's on the way.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll recognize comments by councilmembers.
I just quickly want to say, I hope everyone, as we head into the new year, has a restful holiday season. I know there's a lot going on in the world that makes it hard for us to accomplish that. In my faith tradition, we are in the middle of Advent. This last Sunday was dedicated to joy and the upcoming one is peace. And so those are the thoughts and intentions I bring. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Your Honor, and to my colleagues, everyone in the chamber. Just two quick things, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, I want to encourage every citizen and resident of this city. If you hear gunfire, to call 911. It is absolutely critical that you dial 911, whether you think it's real or not. Don't ask yourself, is it gunfire or not? Ask yourself if someone might be wounded somewhere. To every resident in this city, do not second guess yourself. And you don't have to live with the resignation that this is just the way things are in my neighborhood. If you hear gunfire, or what you think is gunfire, please pick up your phone and call 911. Someone's life may be dependent upon it. Secondly, Mr. Mayor, I want to associate myself with Councilmember Caballeros, wishes for the season for many this year. This is a season of light and expectancy and hope. And we want to send best wishes out to the residents and citizens of our city. In my faith tradition, there's a song that we sing this time of year, and one of the lines says, "Truly, he taught us to love one another. His law is love and his gospel is peace. Chains shall he break, for the slave is our brother, and in his name all oppression shall cease. May it be so in this time and forever." God bless Durham. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Rist, welcome. Do you have any comments?
No, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman? Okay. All right, thank you. I will just remind us that, again, I want to just familiarize or re-familiarize our, just the community at large, with the delicate balance here of just trying to provide, provide space for everyone to share their remarks. Make sure that you can express yourself, but also know that, you know, we have a lot of business that we are responsible and obligated for handling. And this is the capacity in which we do it. And that's our obligation. So I want to make sure that we follow these processes. I will remind everyone, just making sure that, you know, just how government works. And also, you know, just I as mayor, I have the power, administrative power, to suppress or empower. That is across the state. I would not try and suppress anybody. That is not the nature of Durham. I want to empower. And so therefore, you know, just I'll make sure we can, you know, listen to the folks who have signed up or who are able to sign up to speak today and speak about whatever the matter is to you as a resident or citizen of Durham. And just be on the lookout for some other remarks coming at a later time. So at this time, I will recognize our city manager for any priority items.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Williams, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, and members of the Durham City Council. I do have two priority items for your consideration this afternoon. Agenda item number 26 is a contract for Central Square Technologies LLC Services Agreement. This is a supplemental item that has been added from the Emergency Communications Department. Secondly, I have item number 27, which is also a supplemental item. And it is with Mid-Atlantic Associates, Inc., and it is a contract amendment. Thank you. Those are the only two priority items I have for you today.
Thank you, Madam Manager. At this time, I'll recognize our city attorney for any priority items.
Thank you, Mayor Williams, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, and members of the city council. It's good to be with you today. The city attorney's office has one priority item. As you all know, from time to time, the city attorney's office does receive requests from other units of local government to join with them in friend of the court briefs for litigation that may have the impact, a potential to impact local governments around the country or regionally or within our circuit. We have received a renewed request for some pretty protracted litigation. And I'd like to invite Assistant City Attorney Anne Marie Tosco up to the podium to describe that litigation to you and let you know what we need from you all.
Good afternoon. My name is Anne Marie Tosco. I'm an Assistant City Attorney for the city of Durham. As City Attorney Rayburg just indicated, the city of Los Angeles intends to file an amicus brief in the matter of State of Texas versus United States, which is on appeal before the Fifth Circuit Federal Court of Appeals. And this is the litigation that is over the legality of the federal government's deferred action on childhood arrivals, or DACA program. An amicus brief is a brief submitted by a group or person who is on a party to the case, but has a strong interest in the subject of the litigation. Here, that group is cities, towns, and counties throughout the nation who are interested in preserving DACA. And the city of Los Angeles has reached out to our office requesting the city of Durham also sign on to that brief. A previous council authorized our office to sign the brief before the district court in this same matter. But as the matter is continuing on appeal, we wanted to bring that renewed request to this new council to determine if you wanted our office to continue to support this litigation. A little bit of background on the matter, and as you may recall or otherwise know, in 2012, DACA was established via memorandum issued by the Obama administration. Beginning in 2018, DACA has been subject to a lot of litigation, one around the legality of that memorandum. In 2022, the Obama administration formalized the memorandum into a rule using the federal notice and comment rulemaking process. However, the same judge that ruled the memorandum unlawful has now ruled that because the 2022 2022 rule does not differ from the 2012 memorandum, that it too is unlawful. And that is what has been appealed to the Fifth Circuit. The brief in support of preserving DACA that we've been asked to sign focuses on how DACA recipients are critical to the communities that they live in. It describes how DACA allows its recipients to live and work and contribute to their communities without fear, specifically by making their communities stronger using the enhanced educational and economic opportunities provided by DACA. For instance, it describes how DACA recipients, 1,500 of which live in the Durham Chapel Hill area, fill critical roles in the public safety, healthcare, and teaching sectors, how they start businesses and generate local tax revenue in their communities. It also describes how DACA makes communities safer for local governments by allowing recipients to report crime and engage with law enforcement without fear of reprisal, in addition to filling those first responder roles that I mentioned. So this is all the subject matter that the brief describes and which we would be signing on in support if that is what this council would like our office to do. This item was initially very urgent, as we were requested to indicate whether or not we would sign the brief by the end of this month. However, that deadline has been extended to the end of January now. Does anyone have any questions?
I'd like to see there any questions. If not, do we need to take an actual vote?
Mr. Mayor, you don't have to actually vote, but we would like to just have a general consensus from the council that you would like us to proceed by signing on to the brief. Or not, whatever the council's pleasure is.
If we are in agreement, thumbs up. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have direction. Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain any priority items by our city clerk. Thank you, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Williams, and Mayor Pro Tem Middleton and councilmembers. The city clerk's office does have one priority item. I'd like to request that council discuss the Ward Three vacancy questionnaire after your business is taken care of today. And if we could have a motion and a second for that, that would be terrific.
So, I'm so sorry, I was distracted. I was getting some other direction, but could you repeat what you said?
Sure. I'd like to request a priority item with council today, that you discuss the Ward Three vacancy questionnaire and that it be settled so that it can be posted on Thursday.
So is that adding to the agenda, or we need to take a motion, we need to take, to take action to discuss that now?
Yes, we need a motion, and you can put it anywhere you'd like on the agenda.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to discuss the Ward Three vacancy.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. We will acknowledge by hand vote. All in favor? All right, all opposed. Have the same right. All right, thank you. And Madam Clerk, I will address the agenda and will close out with that item. All right, and I also have to take action on the manager's priority items. Remind me which items it was. Yeah, right here. All right, I'll entertain a motion for the two priority items added by manager Page to be added to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and properly seconded. Can I acknowledge by hand, please? In favor, all opposed. Have the same right. Thank you. Those items will be added. All right. At this time, I will read our consent agenda. All right, at this time, I'll read our consent agenda. Item one, Mayor's Council for Women Appointment. Number two, Racial Equity Commission Appointment.
I'd like to pull that item.
Number three, November 2023 Bid Report. Number four, Contract Modification for Language Services Solutions LLC. Number five, Contract with Project Access of Durham County to Provide Rapid Re-Housing Services. Number six, Contract with Housing for New Hope to Provide Rapid Re-Housing Services to households experiencing homelessness. Number seven, Contract with Families Moving Forward for Supportive Services in Emergency Shelter. Number eight, Contract with Housing for New Hope to Provide Supportive Services to Participants in Permanent Supportive Housing. Number nine, Contract with Urban Ministries for Supportive Services in Emergency Shelter. Number 10, Cooperative Group Purchase Contract Three, Automated Refused Trucks. Number 11, Contract with Oracle Elevator Hold Co. Incorporated for Elevator Maintenance and Repair Services. Number 12, First Renewal and Amendment to City of Durham and Durham Arts Council Incorporated Building and Services Agreement. Number 13, Contract for Central Square Services Agreement. Number 14, The U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance, 2023 Local Solicitation, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, Project Ordinance, Superseding Grant Project Ordinance Number 16192. Number 15, Gaston Stormwater Infrastructure Repairs, SD 202402. Number 16, Grant Project Resolution for Belt Street Stormwater Improvements. 17, Amendment Two to Contract 18648 with EMA Resources Incorporated for Handling and Disposal of Water and Wastewater Treatment Plant Biosolids. 18, Professional Services Contract Award to HDR Engineering Incorporated of the Carolinas for Perian Polyfluorocolicil, that's a, that's a, that's a stinger there. Substances Consulting Support. Polyfluorocil, that's what it is, polyfluorocil. 19, Interlocal Agreement with Durham County for the Northeast Creek Sewer Basin Hydraulic Model. 20, Community Safety and Wellness Task Force Final Report and Recommendations. Will be a hearing. Presentation, I'm sorry, to public hearings. 2021 Consolidated Annexation Sage Brook Consolidated. Number 2022 Consolidated Annexation 5802 South Miami Boulevard, Multifamily. 23 Consolidated Annexation East Club Gateway. 24 Planning Department Fees Ordinance Update. 25 Jessica Sheffield as a Citizen Matter. 26 Contract for Central Square Technologies LLC Services Agreement. 27 Mid-Atlantic Associates Contract Amendment.
Mr. Mayor, if I could pull item 16.
16? Yes, 16. All right, those are our agenda items today. At this time, Citizen Matters. So items pulled are items two and 16. Before we get into the agenda, we will address Citizens Matters. Okay, good. The first person we will hear from is Jessica Sheffield. Welcome to City Hall. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney, Members of Council. Good afternoon. It's nice to have a moment with you. Thanks for this opportunity. My name is Jessica Sheffield. I'm the Executive Director of the Ina River Association. And I bring with me today my new colleague Natalie Wallace. We've created a new Community Partners Manager position at the Ina River Association. As this year, we're going to be really pivoting and getting back to our advocacy roots, our community roots, making sure we have someone out with community groups listening to see if the work the Ina River Association is doing in the coming years is the right work for Durham. But really, today, I'm not coming to ask you for anything at all. It's a pleasure to come in that vein. But really, today is just about holiday cheer and sharing with you our new 2024 annual wall calendar. This is something that we do every year for members of council. Our kind city clerk will be distributing those to you. But again, in this theme of community building and such, we wanted to make sure to highlight the million visitors to the Ina River Parks each year by making sure the people are in the pictures this year. So don't be disappointed. The beauty and the wonder and the cultural and historical resources that we protect and preserve despite the work of our mission is highlighted as well, but so are the users of the people, or excuse me, so are the users of the river. So we're glad to be highlighting this, and we called this year's calendar "The People's River." So we're glad to be able to share that with you. And again, best wishes to you and your families at this holiday time. In the next year, we'll be back to do some business with you as we work again to preserve and protect the natural resources that is the Ina River watershed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sheffield. All right, the next person I have is Isaac Woods. Good afternoon, Mr. Woods. Welcome to City Hall. You can state your name, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Isaac Woods. I'm a resident at Ardmore Drive. Mayor-elect, Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilman, City Manager, City Attorney. I appreciate your listening, your patience and time as I was explaining this issue between the city Public Works Department within the city of Durham. This is a case of retaliatory and racist actions by the Public Works Department with the city of Durham. I'm not alleging that everyone within the Public Works Department of the city is racist or engaged in retaliatory conduct. It appears to be limited to just a few members in regards to 905 Ardmore Drive. That's a new construction that I build a new house. The city Public Works Director stated, "Everything has been complied with." Mr. Hoser, he's your Director of Public Works. The Public Works Department states, "Oh, there's something wrong with the site." But the Public Works Department refused to state, as I emailed to the ordinance, which is attaching your email to city manager Page, "Please provide me the stature, the ordinance, that this house violates." That's a right, due process. Let me give you the remix on that. A police officer pulls your car over. He has to have a law, a stature, or ordinance for detaining you in your car. This house has been held hostage since July with no written response on what ordinance, stature, that it's complied with, other than inspections, planning departments, that everything's in compliance, but Public Works refused to sign off on it. So I'm here today. As you can see in your emails, this is totally unfair. I'm a member of the Home Builders Association, one of the two few minority members of the Durham chapter. I review this with my peers. They cannot believe that I'm being treated this way. But as your Deputy Director stated, that if I continue to complain about Ardmore Drive, and Ardmore Drive is a street in Durham incorporated in 1987 that has no water. One half has water-sourced paved street, other half, people of color, has none, no fire protection. So I need to stop complaining about it. So I ask you, to ask the city manager and the Director of Public Works to stop engaging in retaliatory conduct, to respond with what ordinance this house at 905 does not comply with. You can't just hold it hostage and say, "I'm tired of you complaining about Ardmore Drive. I'm just a representative." They killed my Luther King for the Civil Rights Movement. You can kill me, but as you look at that petition, that's 36 other homeowners out there that doesn't have water, fire protection, and we pay taxes just like everybody else in the street. So as I renew my request again, you need to grant the city of compliance. It complies with everything, as your Director and Inspector say. The only hole up is your Public Works Director and their management staff, as a lot of the staff members have said. I appreciate your time on this matter of 905 Ardmore Drive. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I did want to make sure that there is a response, a city response to 905 Ardmore Drive.
Okay, if you're prepared to respond now, you can.
Good afternoon, Members of Council. I'm Don O'Toole, the Deputy City Attorney. If I might, can I circulate a handout that the city sent to this gentleman? Sorry, I don't think I had quite enough copies, but what I've provided to you is an email that was sent to Mr. Woods back in July. Sofia Hernandez and I met with all of the relevant city departments, including Public Works, inspections, and our NIS department. At the bottom of that email, you'll see photographs that our staff took of this property. As you can see, in really close proximity to this residence, as Mr. Woods said, it's a new construction. There is a cut slope that is nearly vertical, completely unsupported. And in addition to the dangers that that slope potentially poses to any occupant of that house, I think you can see in the upper right-hand picture, there's also water ponding between the vertical wall and the house. You know, a solution to this would be for Mr. Woods to get a professional engineer to look at this slope and indicate to the city that it's stable. I would suggest, however, that there's likely no professional engineer in the state of North Carolina that would say that that slope is stable. And so the concern is that that near vertical slope in such close proximity to a residence.
Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I just want to make sure Mr. Woods understands that response. And I do want to just make sure to follow up with staff, because I do think that there's some murkiness here with the concern about this being tied to complaints about there not being city water on Ardmore Street. And so I do want to continue to follow up on it, and I'll leave it at that. But I hope that helps, Mr. Woods, so you have a response.
Mr. Woods, I want to be able to honor your issue. I would like to actually personally reach out to you, as you've been sharing a lot of this with me as well. Councilmember Freeman, I invite you to engage in that as well, and I'll join you in meeting with staff to get a better understanding.
And I'll look for staff to try to coordinate some time so that we can all...
Sounds good. That way, we can not do it this way. I want to be able to really honor your concern. I want to be able to really honor your concern. Online. Okay. All right. Is that all the other cards I have? Okay. All right, so I'll start with online. I'll start with online. All right. Okay. All right, we're going to start with our online guests. The first person I have is Quaid Weston. Can you hear me? Quaid Weston.
Yes, I can hear you. Hope you can hear me.
Yes, I can hear you. Just speak up a little bit more. You have three minutes. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, this is loud enough. So my name's Quaid Weston, 27713. Good afternoon to the council. Thank you for the time and shout out to the people there. Thanks for showing up. So I signed up for Citizens Matter, hoping that this is the right space for this. But as a member of both, R.A. Anderson and the growing hub of Black Men Building the Triangle, as well as serving on the Cultural Roadmap Planning Group, these organizations and myself have signed on to the support of a UE 150 demand for a ceasefire resolution. And really, I hope to take this moment to say that I hope we take, and US Council take these demands seriously, and find ways to work creatively and collaboratively to make these things happen. So there are numerous cities across the nation demanding a permanent ceasefire and release of all hostages, including all the Palestinian people imprisoned by Israel, and we hope that you will join on to that chorus of people and cities. We're also demanding and asking for the city to take a position, and not to take a position because we want to appease ourselves or feel good, but because we believe in Durham and also a country, a state of North Carolina, where people are heard, their demands are met, and that we affirm life and not death. Also, in asking for that support, it's really about all these asks and finding the interconnections between here and the nation, and international even, and hoping that you will support a raise for city workers to be paid at least $25 an hour, along with supporting the fully funding the HEART program. And really, it's about having the opportunity to use our resources wisely and to support implementation of even the Safety and Wellness Task Force recommendations, the implementation of the Cultural Roadmap Planning Group when we get to that next year. And we cannot say that we didn't have the resources when we know now quite clearly where those are going instead. So if and if we choose not to, as a city, I hope we're willing to be accountable for that. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Weston, for your comments. Right, I have, next up, I have King Sage. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Awesome. What's up, y'all? My name is King Sage. I'm a resident of East Durham, and I'm here to advocate for City Council to call for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. I call on City Council to stand in solidarity with the Palestinian people in Gaza, currently facing a campaign of genocide, ethnic cleansing, and collective punishment by the state of Israel, that is funded by US tax dollars. Durham City Council must pass a resolution condemning the ongoing genocide against Palestinians and call for an immediate ceasefire. Please stop funding the violence and invest in safety for our communities here in Durham. As a resident of East Durham, I decry racist occupation in all its forms. I reject the notion that taxpayer dollars are used to destroy families, lives, and communities. I call on Durham City Council to both publicly commit to no further collaboration with the Israeli occupation forces and in any capacity, and immediately divest municipal funding from police and militarization here in our city. I want our tax dollars to be used to fund real programs of community safety. So I'm calling on City Council to invest in life-affirming social programs like robust public education, quality affordable housing, accessible public transportation, healthcare, livable wages for our city workers at the requested $25 an hour, and to fully fund the HEART program so that we can have independent crisis response units, independent from the police. We need to call for an immediate ceasefire and remain committed to the legacy and precedent that Durham has already sent in making sure that our officers are not trained by Israeli forces. We need to continue that commitment to demilitarization and investing in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Liv Lynn.
Hi, Council. This is Liv Lynn. I'm a Jewish resident... Thank you so much. Thanks for hearing me again today. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with y'all. I'm a Jewish resident of Durham, and I'm asking you to introduce and vote to adopt the ceasefire resolution drafted by UE 150 as soon as possible. Last night, I asked you to hear me and believe me, it is less safe for me to be Jewish in Durham while my City Council will not take a clear position against genocide. After two and a half months of silence while on council or campaigning, it makes me wonder where my council members would have stood in 1884 when pogroms forced my grandfather's grandparents out of their homes and country. I don't know the names of the family members I lost in that violence. I feel that grief profoundly as I watch the Israeli military displace, bury, and bomb Palestinian people with weapons I paid for. I cannot explain the despair and alienation from my own faith, I feel, when people tell me I am self-hating or anti-Semitic for believing Palestinians should live. Let me be clear, there is nothing moral and certainly nothing Jewish about supporting Israel's terrible violence with Durham's dollars or with your silence. It is my Judaism that obligates me to ask this of you, in the decades-long tradition of Holocaust survivors, rabbis, and Jews across the diaspora doing the same. I can only assume you're hearing from Jews who disagree with me and this tradition. And this requires you, as non-Jews on the council, to each come to your own conclusion. No talking points, no politicking, just you and what you know. What we are all witnessing is wrong. We gave you the power to stand against it when we voted for you. I'm using my voice in every way I have the power to. Please support me, your Jewish and Palestinian constituents, and all of us here asking you to do the same. Introduce and adopt the ceasefire resolution, redirect our limited resources to $25 an hour wages for city workers, and full funding for the HEART program 24/7, and free Palestine.
Thank you so much, Liv. Next, we have Leslie St. Dre. Leslie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Welcome, Leslie. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Yes, I want to back up what the others have said about ceasefire. I'm with Mothers for Ceasefire. I'm a Durham resident, also with Ina River Tenants Association, Durham Beyond Policing, and Durham Workers Assembly. Many of us have been advocating for permanent ceasefire, no aid or arms to Israel, and to do everything we can to stop the genocide. This is a direct call from Palestinians in Gaza. We must use the leverage that we have to pressure our Congress people and pressure the President to stop the genocide that we are all responsible for in the United States, since we are the biggest funder of Israel. Israel's war in Gaza is killing women and children at a rate faster than almost any other conflict in the world this century. This is not complicated. Human Rights Monitor estimated at least 90% of the people killed in Israel's assault on Gaza thus far have been civilians, a rate that exceeds those of the US wars on Vietnam, Korea, Iraq, Afghanistan, as well as Russia's war on Ukraine. Genocide, ethnic cleansing, endless occupation, annexation of land, apartheid are not self-defense. They are war crimes under international law. The right to self-defense can be invoked when the state is threatened by another state, which is not the case. Israel is occupying Palestine, and it's not recognized as a state. On top of that, I know some of you are in support of this, perhaps not a resolution yet, but we want you to introduce it, announce that you will introduce it today. A statement is not enough. As we've seen with Valerie Fuze's statement, it is empty. She's not said a word on it. It's not the leverage that we need. We need to state that Durham as a city is behind this resolution that is much more powerful than a simple statement that doesn't actually hold anyone accountable. In the bottom of the resolution, it has steps that we call on the clerk to do, to submit it, to pressure Congress, the state, the White House, and say that we do not want, Durham does not accept that our $4.5 million are going towards genocide instead of paying city workers what they need. We can stop this right now. We all need you to stand with us on the right side of history. So who of you will announce that you'll introduce it today? All of us are watching. This is not complicated. Again, we are alone. The US is alone in the world in accepting this genocide, and we are blocking the prevention of it. So we need one of you, any of you, to take it up and introduce it, announce that you'll introduce it today so that we can continue to talk about it and vote on it and pass it and implement it. And this is a long-term game.
Thank you so much. You can't hear the buzzer, but it went off. That was your three minutes. All right, next, I have Deniqua Rambar. Deniqua, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, I can hear you.
All right, if you will, just speak a little closer into your mic. You have three minutes, and welcome.
Can you hear me?
That's much better. Thank you.
Great. I'm here today, like, along with the others, to urge that Durham City Council demand a permanent ceasefire regarding the genocide that the Israeli army is inflicting upon the Palestinian people. Anything less than a permanent ceasefire is inhumane and unjust. What is the point of the law if we do not use it to protect life? As American citizens, we have a global responsibility and duty to protect life of all people. I'm urging the Durham City Council to demand a permanent ceasefire so we may do our civic duty as global citizens. The US is alone in the world in accepting this genocide, and we must, as Durham residents, stand up for what we believe in and call for a ceasefire. And along with the others, I'm also asking that we redirect funds to fully fund the HEART program and pay city workers $25 an hour.
Thank you so much. And last, I have online, Nandi. Nandi Smith? Nandi, can you hear me?
Yes, I think I can. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear. You have three minutes. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate the time today to speak again before you all. I'm here, along with many others, to request that you all introduce a resolution for a ceasefire, for the stopping of the genocide of Palestinian people in Gaza. North Carolina alone spends $91 million annually to send to the Israeli military. In Durham, from our taxpayer dollars, is sending over $4 million. And I really want us to stop wasting and spending taxpayer money on genocide. I think about all of what is happening to the young people there and thinking about, yeah, the privileges that we get to have here and, yeah, how our folks deserve a lot better here. And I think that it, yeah, it behooves us to think about the ways that we need to get in better alignment here around how we're spending our taxpayer dollars and focus more of that money that we're spending on genocide and wars here locally. Since October to December 12th, Israeli forces have killed over 18,000 Palestinians. Over 7,000 of them have been children. And over 51,000 are unaccounted for. And so I'm asking you all again that we need a permanent ceasefire, and we need Durham City Council to be like other cities and lead the way to speaking out and stopping this dire humanitarian crisis. Thank you all for your time, and I want to also ask that you all also return back to raising the wage for $25 an hour for city workers and reroute that money both to our workers who deserve to live in this city and be able to afford living here, as well as the HEART program. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Nandi. Those are all of our online speakers. We will now move to in-house. The first person I have is Lee Mortimer.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. There is an individual online with their hand up, and they were on the list.
So sorry.
Samuel Scarborough.
Oh, Samuel signed up for item number 20.
Number 20?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
When we get to item number 20, I'll be calling on Sam.
Thank you.
And Sam, if you can hear me, I'm coming to you as soon as we get to that agenda item. All right. Mr. Mortimer? And I have after Mr. Mortimer, Manju and Robert Goodman.
Thank you. I'm Lee Mortimer, 35-year resident of Durham and Executive Committee Member of Voices for Justice in Palestine. I came last night because of information circulating that Mayor Williams would be submitting a statement about Gaza for council's consideration. After last night, you need no reminder of the rising concern for thousands of civilians being killed in Israel's campaign to destroy Hamas. VJP did not hesitate to condemn on our website Hamas's barbaric violence against Israeli civilians on October 7th. But there can be no justification for the deaths of so many defenseless civilians, even if Hamas is using them as human shields. Israel's indiscriminate bombing and the massive civilian death toll constitute a war crime. Just yesterday, CNN, BBC, and other media reported Israeli airstrikes in Jabalya Refugee Camp killed over 110 people. Videos showed bodies of small children laid out in front of a medical center. The Biden administration is deeply complicit in the ongoing slaughter. Concerned citizens appeal to you for a ceasefire resolution to halt the killing of women, children, and entire families in Gaza. We've heard the argument that council should stick to local issues and avoid foreign policy. That comes across as a tactic to forestall fake outrage, such as occurred after your decision against Durham police getting militarized training from states like Israel. Anyone who would object to ending the mass killing in Gaza lacks any human feeling. There is precedent for local governments to speak on foreign policy. In the 1980s, the Durham City Council opposed apartheid in South Africa and maintained a policy of not doing business with companies that did business in South Africa. That council would not have been intimidated by those who might have wanted to justify apartheid. The Biden administration needs to hear from communities like Durham, particularly as North Carolina will be a battleground in next year's election. I volunteered and went out knocking on doors for Biden-Harris in 2020. Unless this situation changes dramatically, millions of voters will walk away from Joe Biden in 2024. The White House may think the worst of the killing will be over in time for voters to have forgotten, but the suffering, death, and devastation in Gaza will be on full display when voting time gets here. If you hear just one thing from our discussion, it's that this issue will not end with whatever statement you may issue. If things don't change, thousands more civilians, including thousands of innocent children, will continue dying in the weeks and months ahead. And be assured, we will be returning here as long as it takes until the killing stops.
Thank you, Lee. I have you for both. You signed up two cards. No worries. I have you down. I'll call you on that, at that point. Robert Goodman. Goodman.
It can be either way. My name is Robert, or Bob Goodman, and I thank the council for letting me have a chance to speak and welcome all of you to the new council members. It's great to see you. We want peace. Those of us who are pro-Israel want peace. But Hamas has promised to continue their brutal efforts to destroy the only Jewish state and increasingly, the only safe place, as we see more and more anti-Semitism in our community. That's what we're thinking about. We're thinking about the safety and continuation of Israel. The proponents of this resolution and all the people who came here to support it, who banded together, we understand how horrible it is to see these deaths. We hate it. We can't stand it. But it was deliberately picked as a low-hanging fruit to prolong, to support their resolution. Prolong cessation of Israel's necessary and... Prolong cessation of Israel's necessary, and it is defensive. Hamas promised to destroy Israel. How can you say it's not defensive to fight back and destroy their ability to destroy Israel? Israel, which Hamas promised to, Hamas promised to repeat their attacks. Looking for accountability, it's in the Gaza Strip. They started the war, they continue the war, they are shooting the rockets, they are allowing their own children to be killed. They have the accountability. The city council is off to a great start with the new mayor and the new members. But we have seen the vast expensive tunnel system. Maybe you've seen it in the papers. Huge tunnels that have been built over the last five to 10 years for the purpose of accomplishing their stated purpose. Those were there in order to invade, in order to invade Israel, in order to make it possible to invade Israel. We spend too much time on a subject. We suggest you not spend time on a subject really out of the context of the city's business. The issue and the issues you must debate. Let's pass a resolution praying and supporting for peace and not for the danger and the eradication of Israel. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Daniel Meyer, Daniel Graber. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you to the council. My name is Daniel Graber. I'm the rabbi of Beth El Synagogue. I speak today only for myself as a citizen of Durham and a local faith leader. I know that some local groups are asking you to weigh in on Middle East politics. And I'm asking you, please don't. October 7th was a trauma from which Jews all over the world are still recovering. Just this weekend, 400 Jewish synagogues and facilities were terrorized again by bomb threats around this country. American Jews are besieged by antisemitism and public discourse around Israel and Gaza must be thoughtful and measured. Let me say clearly, nearly every Jewish person I know is deeply pained by the terrible suffering unfolding in Gaza. But there is no consensus about the right way forward. Many believe that the only way to secure peace for Palestinians in Gaza and for Israelis is to free Gaza from the violent tyrannical rule of Hamas. We are pained by civilian casualties, but know that Hamas deliberately uses civilians as human shields. The international definition of genocide, it is an intent to destroy a national ethic, racial, or religious group in whole or in part. Hamas committed an act of genocide on October 7th, murdering, raping, torturing as many Jews as possible. And it has said it will continue to do so until it is stopped. Israel does not seek to destroy Palestinians. Its war is with Hamas, and accusations of genocide are irresponsible and wrong according to international law. I pray every day for the immediate release of hostages, one of whom, by the way, is a child of somebody in my synagogue here in Durham. And there are many people who believe that Hamas will only respond to military pressure. I don't know if all of that is right or wrong. But the important thing is that this city council was not elected to do this. The involvement in issues like this will make a large segment of Durham citizens feel unsafe and unwelcome in a place that we want to feel at home. Please do not make us feel invisible. Don't make us feel like we have no place in this city because we love Israel, because we care about Israelis, and we are moral and care about Palestinians as well. I ask you, our safety as a Jewish community is in your hands. Do not entertain a resolution that is going to further divide this city.
Thank you. Whoa, 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 whoa. Whoa, we would not, we would not. Okay? Let's be civil. The next person I have is Jerry Marcados.
My name is Jerry Marcados and I live at 180 Hartree Lane, Pittsburgh. I come here representing, partly representing Veterans for Peace. Over the years, I have worked within the Democratic Party, working on resolutions. And I've seen, I've seen very straightforward resolutions pushed aside and buried. Resolutions that were passed by my county and my district. And I've seen misrepresentations made about it. Let me just tell you what the resolution is. It's very brief. It repeats the Declaration of Independence, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness being so basic. And it also calls upon our government to support equal rights, period, for all people in the Holy Land. Those principles have been betrayed repeatedly by pressure within the Democratic Party, by pressure, by arms industry owning our Congress and pushing our human needs aside. I came here last night and I admired the way in which this board respects the needs of the citizens. And I understand that many times legislature and national government fail to come through for our people. So I just want to come down to something so basic as to, as a children's story. You probably heard the story of the Little Red Hen. And there were these various needs that would come up. And, and it would be understood, this needs to be done or that needs to be done. And the Little Red Hen each time would have to say, I guess I'll just have to do it myself. And I'd like to appeal this board to approach this issue in that spirit. Because I've seen it last night and I was here when the decision not to allow brutal military tactics to be part of our police training. There's nothing more basic than respecting hospitals, churches, families. These things that are happening on a national level, our national leadership has shown is incapable to get it right. Because over and over, the call for equal rights has been set aside by excuses. We don't need the excuses. We've seen the horrible consequences right now. And I just want to thank the spirit that I saw last night. And I appeal to you all to affirm a ceasefire plus a call for simple equal rights for everybody in the Holy Land. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next I have Reverend J. Mark Davidson. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, good afternoon. I'm Mark Davidson, retired Presbyterian minister, executive director of Voices for Justice in Palestine. VJP is an interfaith nonprofit working on a just and lasting peace in Israel-Palestine. We office at the West End Community Foundation and are proud to call Durham home. I'm here to give you, if I may, six reasons why the Durham City Council should approve a permanent ceasefire resolution. Reason number one, with over 20,000 Palestinians, 10,000 of whom are children, and 2,000 Israelis dead, the obvious humanitarian reason, it stops the killing. As a Christian pastor and social ethicist, it is astounding to me that calling for a ceasefire has become so politicized. It is the absolute moral minimum that we all should do with any shred of humanity. Everyone has a right to live. I know you join me in not wanting to see any more dismembered children lifted out of the rubble, or any more orphans wandering through the wasteland wailing for their dead parents, or any more parents devastated by the deaths of their children. Reason number two, people are starving in Gaza. Infectious diseases are spreading. People are dying from chronic conditions and injuries due to lack of medical care. Aid agencies cannot save their lives until there is a ceasefire. Reason number three, best practices for safe hostage release back to their families is not going in with guns blazing, but when there is a ceasefire, so there can be negotiations. Reason number, reason number four, Israel has destroyed the homes of over 1 million people. Hundreds of thousands of tents and blankets are urgently needed. An immediate and permanent ceasefire allows aid agencies to save thousands of lives. This is no time for dithering and halfway measures. Reason number five, some say that foreign policy is not the business of this council. Many of us disagree. The voice of city councils on the full range of public affairs really matters. Polls indicate that a substantial majority, 75% of Americans, want a ceasefire. Approving a ceasefire resolution would reflect the will of the majority of the people of Durham. This would be a very appropriate act of representative democracy. Reason number six, regarding Israel's claim that it needs a long devastating war on Gaza to finally eradicate Hamas and win the peace, many experts express serious doubts about this strategy. For every one Hamas fire Israel kills, it creates at least 10 new Hamas fighters who have been radicalized and will burn with resolve to keep fighting for their freedom. Additionally, Israel's collective punishment of the entire Gazan population is an egregious war crime that constitutes genocide. And aligning ourselves with Israel is further damaging our standing in the international community.
Thank you.
Last sentence, if I may. The bottom line is that ceasefire is moral, humanitarian, constructive, and appropriate.
Reverend Davidson, thank you.
And it puts Durham on the right side of history.
Thank you. Pardon my informality. I'm going to pronounce, I'm going to just call you by your first name because I don't want to mess up your last name, Chioma. And I, I just can't make out the handwriting. So if you don't mind, just stating it when you come up here. I appreciate it. And welcome, and you have three minutes. And after Chioma, I have Maya Ganem and Eric Johnson.
My name is Chama Ibaku. Hello, council. Hello, people. To quote, a quote from Mr. Dunyan, he said, "I feel like I'm going mad." Every politician is saying the killing of civilians is never acceptable. And that is why we must stand with Israel as it drops apartment blocks on children. Like me, many of you are from the Christian faith tradition. Ms. Javierah, Mr. Mark Anthony, I know you guys said Happy Advent, and Happy Advent to you as well. In this season of Advent, we celebrate a time. We celebrate a time, a time when Christians remember the birth story of a brown colonized Jew from the West Bank. His name was Jesus. He was Palestinian. His home is being bombed. The third oldest church in the world is being bombed. And the oldest Christian community in the world is being attacked. The Pope called for it to stop. Every single country in the world, except the US and its allies, are calling for it to stop. You need to call for it to stop. Who the heck votes against ending a genocide? This is the bare minimum, the bare minimum. Again, who the heck votes against ending a genocide? You can't say that you're for any rights if you vote against ending a genocide. We need y'all to listen to the people and vote against this measure. And to be clear, we know that you will vote against this. The only question is when? Will you vote against it after the fact and lie to voters to say that you always supported human life? Or will you vote against it now? The question is when? We need you to be truthful. Your voters can see through any lies. We are watching, and we're watching carefully. So please act wisely. Thank you very much.
The last speaker that I have also, I had you online, but welcome to in-person, Shiva Maradashti. You have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Maya Gonim. I'm a Durham resident. My zip code is 27707. Thank you to those who voted against additional Shot Spatter funding last night. As a voter, I will remember those who voted for additional funding come next election cycle, Mark Anthony Middleton and Leonardo Williams. I again want to ask why a permanent ceasefire resolution was not on the agenda yesterday. UE150 provided a ceasefire resolution that I urge you to pass. UE150 is a union of workers, not a group of activists, as you so claim, Mark Anthony Middleton. Javierah Caballero, I know you gave some kind of explanation for this at yesterday's meeting. The semantics for not having a ceasefire resolution, these so-called procedures, mean nothing because there is an emergency in Palestine right now. The death toll of Palestinians since October 7th has surpassed 19,000 people. 19,000 deaths are not low-hanging fruit. This is a war crime according to international law. That's why almost every country besides the United States have called for a ceasefire in the UN. Counsel, surely your so-called procedures have some guidelines for what to do during an emergency like this. If not, then your rules have failed us. I will not rest until a permanent ceasefire resolution is passed by a city council, by the city council. Once again, I urge city council to support UE150's budget demands, raise city worker wages to $25 per hour, expand the HARP program, and pass a permanent ceasefire resolution for Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Eric Johnson. Welcome. You have three minutes.
My name is Eric Johnson and I live with my wife Libby at, in Durham for the past eight years. Over the past 54 years of being an ordained Presbyterian minister, I've heard the weeping of mothers from Birmingham to Soweta, from Memphis to Nicaragua, from Durham to Gaza for their children. There is a time under the sun to weep. There is also a time under the sun for laughter. I stand shoulder to shoulder proudly with my Muslim and Christian and Jewish and Hindu and other faith friends, but more proudly with my young people that I heard last night and over the past years here in Durham and my own children, including my daughter-in-law, who is Jewish. They cry with rama. It is heard in our scripture, the Hebrew scripture, their rama. It weeping with great mourning for her children because they are no more. Imagine yourself, I invite you to excuse the decorum of this meeting and listen to the wailing, the weeping of the mothers of Gaza. Listen to, transport yourself in your own mind's imagination into Wade Wallace Stadium. And this year, it seats over 50,000 people. I was there with the Notre Dame when it fell to capacity. It is quickly being filled to capacity by the children and the mothers and the fathers and the neighbors that we are to love day by day, hour by hour. As you heard, more than 7,000 children have already been killed, slaughtered. I stand shoulder to shoulder with all the voices across the world, Human Rights Organization, Position for Social Responsibility, leaders of the major faith traditions. Stop the war, stop the slaughter, stop the genocide. We have already obliterated Gaza. It's uninhabitable. And why we look to you to... We have already obliterated Gaza as uninhabitable, and why we look to you to pass a resolution denouncing the genocide, calling for immediate ceasefire, is to point to a reality to which we wish, along with the prophet Isaiah, with our faith friends, to hear again in the streets the laughter of children. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello. Thank you, council members, for hearing our comments today. My name is Shiva. I'm a Durham resident and healthcare worker here in our city, often called the City of Medicine. I'm here today urging you to formally introduce the proposed resolution for a permanent ceasefire in your working session today, if possible. Over the past 10 weeks, as I've worked in our city's hospitals, day in and day out, I haven't been able to wrap my head around the horrors occurring in Gaza's hospitals every minute of every day. In this past week, it's been reported that only eight out of 36 hospitals in Gaza are functioning in a limited fashion with severe overcrowding, critical supply shortages, and relentless attacks on patients and healthcare workers. Just this past Saturday, Israeli army bulldozers buried refugees and patients sheltering outside of Kamalidwan Hospital, crushing them alive. I don't know about you, but working in our hospitals here while watching Gaza's hospitals burn and Palestinian bodies crushed is about the least connected I've felt to humanity. I, like many, and like many of you, am overcome by grief, but what we need to recognize collectively is that despair is a dangerous place for our hearts to live. So I'm here today urging you to please search your hearts for the strength and resolve to stand up against the horrific acts being funded by our tax dollars. History will remember where we stood in this moment. Please join us in taking this stand together. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you to our community. And. What's your, what's your name? Oh, that was online.
She said last night.
Oh. So the way, the way it actually works is you have to sign up the date of. What's your name? I'm sorry. Say again. One moment. I'm so sorry. It was. Yes, please come to the podium. Blue Miller, correct. Could you step over to the side for me? And you can just come to the podium. You have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, council members. My name is Elizabeth Arians. I live at 804 Berkeley Street. My ZIP code is 27705. First, I want to thank council members Freeman, Rist, Caballero, and Baker for their decision to vote against extending the Shot Spatter program last night. I also want to express my disappointment with council member Middleton specifically for not just voting against the, not just voting to approve the extension, but for dismissing the opposition as professional activists who needed to step back to let the community speak, when many of the professional activists who were present last night worked tirelessly to give community members a voice through the development of the Community Safety and Wellness Task Force. I'm also here to read a statement written by my friend Heather Hall, who couldn't be here today and who, along with myself and many community members who have spoken today, last night, and over the last several months, supports a ceasefire resolution. As a Jewish North Carolinian, I was raised a Zionist. It fit neatly into the rhetoric of anti-terrorism pervasive in the early 2000s. I visited Israel on birthright in 2009 and considered making a lea. It is lonely to be a Jew in the South, the only one in my graduating class at New Hanover High in Wilmington, North Carolina. The Christian majority I was surrounded by would throw Heil Hitlers at me while I presented class projects and ask where my horns were. Yet they became docile and gentle and sweet when wistfully wishing my safe return to the land of Israel. This terror and confusion inspired in me was never validated. These are not the terrorists, I was told. These were Americans, patriots, Young Life student leaders. It is true that these Christian Zionists are at the heart of the U.S. Patriotism and Zionism are intertwined and interdependent. We see it with the exchange of our tax dollars for weapons to indiscriminately kill citizens. We see it in the exchange of police practices and intel, and we see it in headlines focused on the devastation to only one side of those affected by this violence. I see it personally in each Christian who shows excitement at meeting me and tells me how much they love Israel. As a second-generation immigrant and the descendant of Holocaust survivors, I know the grief of erasure. I know that I will never know the full depth of what I have been denied by the systematic killing of my ancestors. So much has been taken by my, from my family. To witness this happening in real time now leaves me with a grief that shatters into the future, a future with far fewer Palestinians who died under rubble rather than gas. This alone is enough to call for a ceasefire and stop supporting Israel's military through our tax dollars and the sick religious support I have experienced throughout my life in North Carolina. But you have heard these stories, you know these stories because you too have witnessed them all your life. Perhaps your own family tree has been split by systemic violence. I don't know all the bonds that may tie you to supporting Israel. I am still examining my own, but I want you to zoom out for a moment. I am coming to you as a Jew who is only hereby chanced because what is happening now happened to my family in Germany less than 100 years ago. Christian Zionists and U.S. patriots will not put down their weapons and our tax dollars if they kill every Palestinian and claim they are Hamas. This idea of a terrorist will expand and come for each of us. It will come for you too, and if it doesn't, it is because you have chosen to be protected by the oppressor. I know this in my bones, in my DNA, that survived because my great-great-grandmother was lucky enough to get a fraction of our family out of Germany. I leave you with the words of a German pastor, Martin Niemöller. First, they come for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me.
Thank you. And just a reminder of the, the timeframe in which we sign up. I do, I know we're all getting used to having a little order again, and I want to make sure that we follow that. I, but it's also, it can be a little confusing too, so I just wanted to honor Ms. Miller's request as she did, she thought she was following the appropriate process. So we'll get there, but thank you for your patience. Blue, you have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Blue Miller. I'm a proud Durham resident, and thank you, Mayor Williams, for allowing me to speak. I appreciate you. I was here last night when the proposal to keep funding Shot Spatter was rightfully rejected by council. Thank you for hearing us. Thank you for listening to the inconclusive data. So I come here today with a simple question. Who among you will announce you're joining us to stop genocide by announcing you'll introduce a resolution for a ceasefire today? I'm specifically calling on you, Nate Baker, to be accountable for the organizations that endorsed you. Triangle DSA, Sunrise Durham, and UE-150, all organizations who endorsed you and made your election possible are calling for a ceasefire. Finally, I urge all of you to be on the right side of history and put the lives of Palestinian people ahead of any political backlash you may fear. Are we as Durham against apartheid, genocide, ethnic cleansing, and collective punishment? If we're not, we're saying we are okay with paying for white, if we are, we're saying we're okay, we're paying for white phosphorus bombs. We are paying for the bombing of churches and hospitals, including maternal wards. We are paying for snipers to shoot up schools and refugee camps. We're even paying for people to kill refugees in tents by crushing them and burying them alive. We, right now, are complicit in these atrocities if we don't demand a permanent ceasefire resolution. I would also like to make clear, as people, as Zionists, are weaponizing the hostages, that Israel's actions have made clear that this genocide is not about Hamas or the hostages, and instead about expanding a settler occupation. In fact, a massive developer just announced their plans to build beach houses on the Gaza Strip. If this were about hostages, we would have seen a hostage exchange by now. Hamas has shared that they will release every hostage upon a permanent ceasefire. If we want to talk hostages, Israel is currently holding over 7,000 Palestinian hostages. More and more Israelis are reporting that Israel killed their family members on October 7th, and just a few days ago, Israeli forces killed their own hostages, three of them, by accident, making clear that they are shooting civilians at random and not Hamas. We, as Americans, as the biggest funder of Israel, have a moral duty to end this genocide and ethnic cleansing campaigns. In your position, doing anything less than calling for a permanent ceasefire resolution would be cowardly. Please listen to UE-150 and sign on to their budget demands for a $25 wage for city workers, an expansion of the HART program, and a permanent ceasefire resolution. This resolution is a long-term commitment to prioritizing our community's needs and standing against ongoing Israeli occupation and war crimes. Thank you.
Well, really quick, before we, before we continue, and I just want to thank everyone for their comments, and as we continue on with the business of the agenda, I will be making some comments once we get our agenda items addressed. Colleagues, we are at agenda item number two, which was pulled by council member Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I recognize that this is an appointment. I did want to just make it a clear force for the rest of my colleagues here that the, the sentiment from some of the members of the commission is that folks are being appointed, and they don't know what racial equity is, and they're losing time trying to teach or train folks around it. And so I do want to ask if we can look at setting an additional question, just gauging folks' level of understanding, or just some background information on what type of racial equity trainings they've had as a part of this process, so that we're not making folks, folks feel like they're wasting their time in, in the committee meetings that they're already on the commission. So that's, that's all. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council member Freeman. I recall when, when the commission was first, the task force was first empaneled, one of the things that was raised, I, I remember because I raised it, was, was, did everybody on there actually take racial equity training? And Madam Clerk, you can correct me historically, I think we had made it a plank, and we may have even set some money aside, that anyone that participated on the task force and then subsequently the commission would take racial, they committed to take racial equity training if they had not already taken it, as I recall when we first empaneled the, the task force. So I think Commissioner Freeman makes, pardon me, council member Freeman makes a, a valid point, but I, I think it was raised when we first started talking about it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I will speak out, or speak with Sharon Williams. She's in charge of the committee and just find out if they have the, the training being offered to the new members. I'll get back to you.
Okay, I was, I was going to suggest that we, we look at those, the application process. We can address that, and if you don't mind, just letting, when you do communicate with Director Williams, just communicate with council member Freeman and Mayor Protem Middleton. Thank you. Any other comments to number two? All right. We are now at item number 16.
And just for a question for staff on item number 16, just recognizing that I think this is coming from a longstanding concern in this area, and I just wanted to get a timeline on, I guess, when they felt like the actual project would be done? I don't know if it's just.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of the council. My name is Antoine Williams. I'm with the Public Works Department. I'm the project manager for the agenda item number 16. So the, the project for the improvements along Bell Street are proposed to finish design in August of next year, and we are looking to go in the bid in the following year in January 2025. We're hoping to be complete with construction sometime in late 2026.
Thank you. That's all.
Good. All right. Our next item is item number 20, which is a presentation from our Community Safety Department. This is our presentation on Community Safety and Wellness Task Force.
Good afternoon, Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton, members of council. This is my first time coming before the newest council, so I did want to welcome our newest members, council member Rist and council member Baker and, and Mayor Williams in your new role. Ryan Smith, Director of your Community Safety Department, and today you'll receive a presentation from the Community Safety and Wellness Task Force co-chairs, Marcia Owen and Xavier Kason. The task force has completed their two-plus years of service and are here to share their final recommendations, especially those that are most relevant for this body. Thank you.
All right. Welcome to the podium. We have allocated 30 minutes for you. Do you have a presentation for us? Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor Williams.
It's good to see you, Director Kason, my band director.
Yes, sir. Good to see you as well. Mayor Protem, members of the council. I am Xavier Kason, one of the co-chairs, former co-chair of the Durham Safety Wellness Task Force. We want to thank you for the opportunity to share our recommendations with you that are specific to the city. On behalf of the task force, and many of them are in the council here, in the chambers here today, I'd like to thank the past two city councils and mayors, this governing body, our task force lays on Councilmember Caballero, and the Community Safety Department's Director Smith, for your vision, for your guidance, for the, and the care of us as a task force, and for our researchers. As a community body, task force was made up of 17 residents of Durham, appointed jointly by the city, by the county, and by the school board. Our mission, set in the bylaws drafted by those three elected bodies, was to identify proactive, community-based approaches to safety and wellness, as well as alternatives to policing in the criminal, just in the criminal legal system. We met monthly as a whole from April 2021 to October 2023. We formed four roundtables, which met more frequently to address the needs of most pressing concern. They were the criminal legal system, violence prevention and intervention, crisis care response, and then youth in schools. Each roundtable conducted, conducted listening sessions with their neighbors. We listened in small groups, town halls, conducted surveys, and had one-on-one conversations. We sought the voices of our neighbors most impacted by violence, trauma, and marginalization. Rooted in the expressed needs of Durham residents and guided by research, we offer this council five recommendations. Our first recommendation came from the Crisis Care Response Roundtable and was approved by the task force on January 5th, on January 5th, 2021. We recommend that the city council begin to staff the 2022/23 Unarmed Skilled Crisis Care Responder Pilots by reallocating the 15 full-time police department vacancies, which were frozen in the city budget, to the Department of Community Safety. We are grateful and encouraged by your consistent, thoughtful expansion of the Community Safety Department and for your commitment to identifying behavioral health crises that need merit, that merit skilled unarmed responses, and for shifting the burden of responding to those emergencies with novel, community-informed crisis response units. Our second and third recommendations also came from the Crisis Care Response Roundtable. Both recommendations address Durham's growing crisis of opioid overdoses. In 20, in 2019, 44 Durham residents died from opioid overdose. In 2020, 82 residents died. In 2021, 108 of our neighbors died from overdose. All fatal opioid overdoses can be prevented by timely administration of the opioid reversal medication, naloxone. Our first opioid-related recommendation empowers city employees with the knowledge and tools to prevent fatal opioid overdoses should a suspected overdose event be encountered while on the job. This can be achieved by the city procuring and distributing naloxone rescue kits and contracting with the North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition professionals, who will provide city employee trainings on overdose response and naloxone administration. You can learn more about that in the recommendation 2.3, page 70 of Appendix 1. Additionally, we recommend that the city expand access to harm reduction services and implement the Center for Disease Control's interventions outlined in their document, Evidence-Based Strategies for Preventing Opioid Overdose, what's working in the United States, to reduce overdose and mitigate the harms posed by an unregulated and unpredictable illicit drug supply. For Durham, this means increased support for Durham's NC Harm Reduction Coalition Services, support for the Community Safety Department, and the purchase of drug checking devices, and. and collaboration with administrative agencies that oversee the allocation and disbursement of opioid settlement funds. And that can be found in Recommendation 2.4, page 79 of Appendix 1, for more details. Our fourth recommendation is from the Violence Prevention and Intervention Roundtable with the aim to decrease the impact of trauma among families living in the Durham Housing Authority communities through three core activities. And the first is the production of an ethno-drama film depicting families and neighborhoods struggling with trauma. The process of the film's creation includes intensive community consultation and focus groups to develop content reflecting residents' actual experiences. The second phase is screening that film at community events that also engage neighbors with engaging activities. The third is to connect the film's viewers to local services that help interrupt cycles of violence and promote healing. And you can refer to Recommendation 3.1 on page 90 of Appendix 1 for more details. And our fifth recommendation was a one-year pilot program called Prescriptions for Repair to conduct facilitated listening sessions with survivors of gun violence. This recommendation came from the Criminal Legal System Roundtable and was approved by this body with funding in May 2022 and was completed on schedule in October of 2023. This was a unique collaboration with Duke's Institute for Health Innovations, Duke Hospital Pediatric Surgery Department, the NCCU Department of Social Work, and Restorative Justice Durham. I'd like to introduce you now to Prescriptions for Repair Coordinator, Azmin Johnson, and invite her to describe the pilot and its results.
Thank you so much, and thank you, everyone here. And thank you, council, and our new mayor. Thank you so much for listening. I just want to share briefly, we already did our presentation on Prescriptions for Repair, but you now have the final report, which was published in November. We were still conducting listening sessions through October, and we were here in early October or late September. But nonetheless, we were able to have 30 survivors, 11 of which were shot, and 19 of which were the family or the loved one of someone who was murdered. We completed 82 listening sessions with 28 trained community facilitators trained in restorative practice. And our core values were respect, integrity, community, and deep listening with compassion. Our circle processes held in the restorative justice by both values and guidelines. Our guidelines were to honor the talking piece. We were there to hold space, listen to understand, not to respond. Lessons can leave the circle, but stories cannot. And I will share some of those lessons here today. And to value the wisdom of participants. This was a survivor-centered work. So everything from the Community Safety Wellness Task Force and also the input, both from council and also Duke, we're thinking with that survivor in mind. What would they need to be able to come to the listening sessions, complete the sessions, and be able to give their wisdom for us? That wisdom that will impact policy and legislation, that same wisdom that will bring healing, not just to the individual, but also to our community. This was a collaborative work. It was also multidisciplinary, and it was based in community. So a few of the takeaways from our listening sessions. Restorative justice frameworks can help survivors of gun violence tell their stories through a nonjudgmental narrative process. Structured listening sessions can address the personal and community harm created by gun violence in the report, which is now made public. If you need one, contact me. You'll find an old flyer, my number's on there, email's on there as well. I can send it to you. But we've now made it public. You will see that there were individual-level prescriptions and also community prescriptions that can be utilized. Survivors confirm that poverty, race, and racism impact the complexities of gun violence. Survivors of gun violence confirm that there is an urgency to focus resources on children and youth. And lastly, which will allow Marsha to come and introduce one of the last proposals of the task force, is that survivors confirm the need for a place in the city that can help them navigate through the effects and the circumstances created by gun violence. It's complicated, it's complex, but it plagues our city and our residents. And there has to be a place here in the city that can deal with that. We have to hold the both and. As we hold space for afar, we cannot neglect with our eyes and our ears and keeping our mouths shut at what's happening right here in our own backyards. So I urge you to support this, and we thank you so much for your collaboration. This work would have not been possible, and it was a novel work. The city of Durham, Duke, NCCU, Restorative Justice Durham, and other community partners, all working together in community, cannot be stated. We appreciate it, and it was a great success. Thank you so much. Marsha?
Yes, thank you. It was, it's been an extraordinary experience in hundreds and hundreds of hours of listening to our community members. I have, and Azmin, I just have to say thank you again for your extraordinary leadership. I have the honor of presenting our last recommendation, which is to fund a three-year pilot program to establish an Office of Survivor Care within the Community Safety Department. This office, we would like it to be established for this purpose of providing short- and long-term care to survivors of violence and their families. The pilot would develop an assessment system to gauge effectiveness, a program budget and personnel required, a violent death notification process with follow-up protocols, an assessment of the North Carolina Victims Compensation Fund and its impact on survivors. And finally, the pilot would convene a small leadership circle of survivors, providers, and Community Safety Department staff to assure that the Office of Survivor Care is a success. This office would reflect the self-identified needs of survivors. It would, as Azmin spoke about, prioritize the safety and well-being of our children and youth. We would serve, it would serve as a community health model that begins from the moment of crisis with critical care and then beyond with community-based listening sessions, connections to professional trauma services, and other community-based opportunities for healing. We are a city of survivors. Last week, The Herald Sun reported that Durham homicides are up 9.4% over last year. To date, 49 people have been taken from us by violence. The stationary majority have been shot. Durham experiences an average of daily non-fatal shootings and almost weekly fatal deaths, violent deaths. We are also a city of great goodness and belonging. There are too many organizations to mention with members at the ready to contribute to the healing and health of survivors. Many are in this room. If you would mind standing, I would love for the council to see the support, those of you who are here to support the Office of Survivor Care, and to turn to one another in moments of such grief and despair to care for one another. Thank you. Thank you. This is us. This is the best of us. Please, please include funds in this upcoming budget to support this pilot program. It really represents a transformative response by directing city funds to a long-absent space dedicated to meeting and supporting survivors in the wake of harm. I've talked about how we glean this knowledge, what we want to do, what this knowledge has taught us to do. And now, I would like for you to hear why, from a very, very personal place, and from a man who is my friend. He is an incomparable caregiver and peacemaker, and also a survivor of violence. Many of you heard his testimony at Durham Can Meeting. But now, it is just an honor for all of us to hear it because you can't hear the truth too much.
Mr. Mayor, who's not there. And City Council. On June 30, 2019, my beautiful 18-year-old grandson TJ was shot to death. His mother and father received a phone call that their son had been killed. By the time they arrived to the scene of the killing, TJ's body had been taken to the medical examiner's office, where they were not allowed to be present with their son. He was no longer there. TJ was now evidence in a criminal investigation. Lord help us. In the criminal legal system, crime is a violation of the law and a violation against the state. TJ's murder became a legal obstruction that only compounded the pain. The only officials that, only official responders that talked to us was to talk to TJ's parents that they were police investigators. Then, there was silence. The family didn't hear from anyone again for another week. It was during those days in limbo when the shame set in. It was when the desire to see TJ and to understand what happened was so great that it took our sleep, our thoughts, our appetites, our emotions, our safety, and our actions. We felt alone and desperate. All we had was law enforcement officials whose job was to solve a crime. This is the memory picture that survives in my family and has taken the health and well-being of our lives. TJ's father, my son, was forever changed by TJ's violent death. He didn't care for himself like he did before. He was fragile and angry. He wanted revenge, to do something, anything that expressed the limitless hurt that he carried within himself. Like so many survivors, I know my son died prematurely with a body burdened and sickened by lament. I'm a mortician, and when I prepare a body taken by violence, I think about the nine-year-old brother, the best friend, the four-year-old daughter, the classmates, the mothers, fathers, grandparents, uncles, aunties, neighbors, and I ask, who have we prepared to take care of them in the days and years that loom before them? Who will listen to their feelings and thoughts without judgment? Who will hear the wisdom and guidance in their stories and intercede on their behalf? Why has no one in Durham's public life been trained and tasked for caring for us and for all survivors of violence? Are victims of violence and survivors and victims of violence presumed guilty and unworthy of care? Is the city of Durham indifferent to the needs because we live in a poverty-stricken community? A people with influence ignored like us? Durham is a city of gun-balance survivors. A few months ago, on a rainy Saturday morning, we stood in a place and we looked at the names of 50 citizens, 50 lives that, that the names and the names and all were taken in one, were standing in one place. We stood there, we held each other, we hugged, we mourned the deaths of 50 of our neighbors, 50 of the people that affects what we are here today for. My brothers and sisters, 90% of them died just like TJ. By ignoring survivors, we are promoting violence. It is past time to build an Office of Survivor Care within the city's Community Safety Department. We desperately, desperately need a place where we can claim our collective obligation in care for survivors' healing and the unique needs that violence created in their lives. An office that is accountable for survivors and the quality and duration of care that is given. An office by the people and for the people. An office that will start to heal. An office that will start to heal.
Counsel, that concludes our presentation.
Well, that's the way to conclude. Thank you. All right, I have two speakers, two speakers for this matter. And the next speaker I have is Sam. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much. My name is Manju Rajendran. I have been so honored to be on the journey with the other members of the Durham Community Safety and Wellness Task Force and the phenomenal staff of the city and county and school board who supported us along the way, all of the community residents who participated with us. We created this document, which I hope you'll lay hands on. If you want to grab one from me, you can. Or you can grab the whole thing online at Durham Community Safety and Wellness Task Force on the city website. During these last two and a half years of the Durham Community Safety and Wellness Task Force, we engaged in the careful work of listening to Durham residents. In our listening sessions in town halls, we began to glimpse a vision for the world we want, to imagine together the community we want to be for each other, to be people who care for the well-being of common life and the safety of our neighbors. Our hope is that the creative possibilities we heard and developed into proposals will continue to inspire our ongoing work in building a better world, a world abounding with safety and peace for all of us, for every resident, for each member of our community. Allocating adequate funding for key community services will always be an important step towards improving community safety and wellness. And in a world with a lot of paper and a lot of email, a lot of overwhelm, I want to really encourage you to go to the website and read the appendices, please, because that's where you'll find the actual voices, the quotes of all of the community members we talked with. Last night, four out of six members on Durham City Council took a clear-eyed principled stand when they declined to extend the Shot Spotter Sound Thinking Pilot Program past its one-year conclusion, while the Wilson Center completes an independent assessment of the pilot study. I hear all of city council and our county commissioners as well united in the clarity that we need to end violence in Durham. But there might still be division about the appropriate point at which to intervene. As a violent survivor who entered community organizing because it was how I could band with other violent survivors to build collective power and design the life-giving transformation that our lives need, I know that the point at which a gun is raised, a fist is moved, a bullet is fired, isn't early enough. We need real, bull-city, homegrown solutions, not failed corporate technology that countless other cities have rejected. We need true, we need true preventative solutions to the gun violence, intimate family violence, sexual violence, abuse, and heartbreak that is hurting our communities. We already know what works to end gun violence, meet human needs, invest in quality public education, just housing, universal health care, expand job opportunity, shared prosperity, and worker justice. Thank you for the work you're doing with the wage study right now. I'm really looking forward to seeing that $25 an hour wage come through for city workers to set a new standard for Durham. Improve our skills, offer wellness and therapeutic-- Improve our skills, offer wellness and therapeutic care, and hope. Thank you.
Sam, can you hear me? Samuel Scarborough.
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, buddy, go ahead.
Cool beans. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sam Scarborough, 27713. I've lived in Durham all 18 years of my life, and it was, it was an honor to serve on the Community Safety and Wellness Task Force. I believe I was the youngest member to serve on that board. I encourage everyone to peruse the task force report and advocate that the recommendations proposed to all three local governing bodies, not just City Council, be implemented effective immediately. I believe the recommendations from our two and a half years of volunteer work rooted in prevention, collaboration, extensive research, and care as opposed to policing and incarceration will greatly benefit Durham residents. We must move forward with the recommendations presented today because the clock is ticking. With gun violence traumatizing our communities and the opioid crisis rising, Durham needs to heal. I believe that hurt people hurt people, and at the same time, healed people heal people. These task force recommendations will build institutions and equip residents with the skills necessary for our collective healing and move Durham closer towards a place that is safe for all. Also, I know while this is little, tangential, I believe the city must also sign on to UE-150's Permanent Ceasefire Resolution because we cannot remain silent. Israel has bombed churches, hospitals, schools, and refugee camps, and has killed thousands of children. And I just want to make sure that we understand the ceasefire resolution is grounded in a longing for freedom and peace and well-being for everyone in the region. So I encourage you all to support the task force recommendations and then also support UE-150's Permanent Ceasefire Resolution. Thank you for your time and service.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And another moment of personal privilege, thank you for being engaged in this public process at such a young age, Sam. And I got your text message. He was asking, "Hey, Mr. Williams, can I, can I talk about the ceasefire?" All right, so, where are we? We're done. All right, that brings us to a, no, we have to talk about the War III.
Mayor, are you taking any questions or comments about the presentation we just heard?
Presentation?
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah. And I will bring this matter to the council. Are there any comments or questions about the resolution? The presentation that we just heard? Councilmember Caballero.
Thank you. I just wanted to, I was the liaison to the Community Safety and Wellness Task Force, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of the members and all of the folks who did additional work. It's a beautiful set of recommendations. I am particularly glad that it does break it down because the intersection around community safety isn't just in front of the City Council, it's in front of many other institutions and organizations. I want to very much thank the co-chairs. I learned a tremendous amount from both of you all. You all are pillars in our community for a reason, and thank you for dedicating so much time to Durham. As somebody said, this is, this is the best of us. So I look forward to advocating and moving these recommendations as a City Council member on this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Caballero. Are there any other comments? Councilmember Freeman? Councilmember Rist?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo Councilmember Caballero's comments. I am blown away by the work of the Community Safety and Wellness Task Force. Thank the chairs and all the folks who spent countless, countless hours on this issue over the last many, many years. So thank you so much for your work. In addition to, you know, the, the work, the ongoing work of the county and the city and others in Durham, I just want to let you know that as a, as a candidate for office in that role, your work was incredibly, incredibly inspiring, informative, and transformational. So I thank you for your, the work that informed those of us who've now entered public service. And I, as well as, as Councilmember Caballero, will be supporting the recommendation for Office of Survivor Care. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you so much to our friends and colleagues, so many friends and just colleagues on this task force and for the monstrous work you've done the last couple of years. I think one of the, there are moments that will stick out when we're no longer on this day, as we're no longer on this job. One of them will be voting for the prescription for cure pilot, getting the funding for that. Just sacred work, it's sacred work. And I was challenged by something you said because I, Office of Survivor Care is necessary and important, I'm going to support it, but the very proposition that we have an Office of Survivor Care by definition means that we've already built into the equation that people are going to get shot. And some of them are going to live. So much so that we're codifying it in our structure, which means that we've also got to do something to put that office out of business on the front end. So when we talk about funding, root cause stuff, I hope that we will be just as engaged in pushing us to spend major money, not in the abstract, but actually on defined substantive front-end type initiatives, whether it's guaranteed income expanding it or other things. And I, I want to be just as intentional about codifying stuff on the front end as we are on the back end. And what that looks like, we'll have to have a family discussion and community engagement around it, but I want to take some votes on that kind of stuff, too, and take it from the abstract and academic to actual ask of what that looks like on the front end. So kudos to just incredible work. I associate myself with what my colleagues have said and looking forward to continuing the work. Thank y'all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I, are there any other comments? All right, thank you. I, I am still getting a little used to this management of the meeting, and one thing I've learned at is, as I'm trying to manage the multiple moving parts, I'm also losing my thoughts on what I'm trying, because there's so many words in my head. So just because I'm feeling words on this does not mean that I'm compassionately interested in it. I really appreciate your, your work. I, I look forward to, I have that really thick book of resolutions that you all gave me at the community showcase of it. I thank you for that. Thank you. Thank you for the work that you all have done. This has been quite extensive. And, and I think I echo some of the comments that Mayor Protem just made. We've been, we, you guys have been very intentional on this, very intentional on where you've ended up. And, you know, what I appreciate about it is it wasn't politicized. It wasn't politicized. And I'm going to ask you and everyone else to not politicize other resources as well. That makes conversations very uncomfortable. And this is good work. And I think this is an approach that we could take. It may not have to be as long, but this is, this is a community-based approach to addressing a need. And one thing that I've been pretty critical of since I got on this diet is the amount of resources and attention that we place on the reactionary side of crime, that we need to put more on the front end. And one thing I can also say is this work was done in Durham. I'm looking forward to this type of work doing, being done in Durham on the front end as well. So I love you, and there's nothing you can do about it. There will be some tough conversations because I'm going to ask for some of the, some of the same energy, you know, and yes, I'm going to explicitly include matters like the vote last night. We have to be able to honestly have those conversations. And I don't want to talk about Chicago and other cities, I want to talk about Durham. I want to talk about Durham, and I want to make sure you put in the same hours and the same energy and the same effort and the same resources in creating mechanisms that make the work that you've done here not necessary. That's what I want, and you won't find an argument out of me with that. Okay? So thank you all. And, and I can't remember your name, who, with the orange folder. Yes, thank you. Thank you for your comments as well. It got me. All right, so, where are we? Settle the agenda. All right, settle the agenda, other comments, all right. Madam Clerk, you have to do something at this point in the agenda. Yeah, your mic's not working.
Okay, I've got two nominations that council has conclusively made a decision on. For the Mayor's Council for Women, under the category of War II, Alicia Sutton. And then with the Racial Equity Commission nomination, the category of at-large is David G. Williams. And as you requested, I will find out that information of training.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. And you had one other priority item. Councilmember Caballero, would you mind leading that?
Thank you. So, yes, there was two requests by two colleagues to add two questions, and then I responded back to just say, do we do that as, as part of the interview process? And so I want to make sure that we're okay with that. If that is the case, then the questionnaire is ready and it can be, it can go live, I guess it's tomorrow that it goes live, correct?
Did you get an okay, or you need an okay from me?
I need to make sure that, that that's okay.
Is one of those my questions?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody's good?
So we're all good with the questionnaire? Okay. Thank you. And then I think, just want to make sure that, Madam Clerk, can you tell us how many applicants we have currently?
Absolutely, we have three applicants so far.
Thank you for that. And it closes Thursday, correct?
Yes, Thursday at 5:00 PM.
Okay, so the application, so the first step of the process closes at 5:00 PM this Thursday, and if you don't do the first part, you don't get invited to do the second part. So, see some of the presses here. For those who are wanting to apply, your, your clock is, is winding down. I do also want to let my colleagues know that, and I said this in an email, but I want to just share it publicly, that both the city clerk and I have had conversations with various Board of Election members, and there is consensus, if we were to have to go to a special election, which means we fail on an appointment, because there is that word "shall," so we have to make an attempt. It could not go to the March primary, I know there was some conversation around that. It's only if there was a special primary in May, which tends to be unlikely, in which case, the next opportunity would be November 2024. So that is the timeline, if we were, if we fail to make an appointment, or enough people don't apply, et cetera, et cetera. I'm just wanting to name that, that, that the risk would be going until November 2024 for a special election. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem?
Thank you so much, and thank you Chair Caballero for, for your work in shepherding us through this process. This might be a question for the city attorney. My, my recollection is that we could piggyback on an election if it was coming up, or it's also within our purview to call, to organize a special election if we, I know it costs money, but if we chose to, I thought we could, if there was no election within a certain frame period coming up and we were deadlocked, that we could, we could call a special election.
So, Mayor Protem, I would have to pull the charter provision and look again, it's been a few weeks since I've looked closely at it, but I, as I recall, it was we would put a special election on at the next available election. I can't remember exactly what the language is. But as you just mentioned, having an election for a single issue, a single ballot on, for a single issue is pretty cost prohibitive.
Yeah. And, yeah, and you're, because I, my, my recollection was that if we piggybacked on the next election, then by definition, it's not special. We're, we're just taking advantage of the opportunity because one's already on the calendar. And if there's not within a certain amount of time, and you're going to call, you're going to pull the language, if I, if I recall, if one's not, then, yeah, it costs, but that, that's like the cost, if we can't agree as a council to, to fill a position, then that's something we have to, you know, we have to, that's the cost of doing business, of paying for an election if we decide, we're probably going to fill a position, but if we should, if we should deadlock, that, if I recall, and I'll give you the opportunity to, to research it, that the options were piggyback on a scheduled election if it's within a certain timeframe, and if not, then it's within our purview to call a special election and pay for it.
And I will, I will examine that issue closely, although I think that special election is, it's special because it's not within your regular order and rotation of elections, right? So if, if the city council is placing an issue on a ballot, whether it's a referenda of some sort or something like this, it's special because it's not within your normal election schedule.
Got you. Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you, council. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and I just want to provide one last clarification because it's come up. So there's been a lot of conversation on special election. Ourselves, Carboro, which is, does not have the word "shall," so they are open to just a choice on their end, which is why sometimes you see elections on their side instead of an appointment. And I cannot remember the third city. Those are the only places in North Carolina that do have the possibility. The appointment process is standard. So I'm just, again, sharing that for the community to, because I think sometimes folks see what's happening in Carboro. They're literally the only community in North Carolina that does it that way. They have a choice based on the wording of their charter that we are, we do not have. And then I can't remember the third location. I think it is High Point. It is High Point. Thank you. So that was a fun fact that I learned, speaking to some Board of Election folks. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Chair Caballero. At this point, I think we have to settle the agenda, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, and members of the Durham City Council. I have for your next City Council meeting, consent, items 1 through 19 and items 26 and 27. I have for GBA public hearings for that meeting, items 21 through 24. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Madam City Manager, I would like to pull item 2 to GBA.
So you're, you're requesting item 2 to go to GBA?
Yes.
Note it. All right, our agenda has been settled. Thank you, Madam Manager. Colleagues, we, we've heard a lot today. I'm sorry, yeah.
Want me to restate it?
Yeah, you will, please.
Thank you. I will restate it. So we have for consent, items 1 and items 3 through 19, and items 26 and 27. For the general business agenda, we have item 2. And for the general business agenda, public hearings, we have items 21 through 24. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager. At this time, I will move, entertain a motion that we set the agenda as settled.
Second.
I'm moving and properly seconding it. I will announce with your hands, all in favor? All opposed? All right, thank you very much. As we are closing, as we're closing the agenda today, colleagues, I would like to ask your okay, and, you know, we haven't discussed this ahead of time, I've discussed this individually with some of you all. We have heard a lot today in regards to something that is really sensitive to our community. And, you know, silence is something that speaks volumes. In addition to that, you know, sometimes our actions can distract the message that we are trying to portray. And regarding the matter in the Middle East, just wanted to ask you all for a consideration. And before I get to that consideration, I'd just like to just tell you what has inspired me to get to this point. As I have said, and I'll say this to the public, I am not interested in entertaining a resolution that is not authored by this council, but I also find it very difficult to remain silent on this issue. And I spent, I probably have had over 20 meetings with community members on all sides of this conversation. of this conversation. And a few things that I learned was it's really hard when you are positioned to make a choice. And what is disturbing about making a choice is, should we be making a choice when humanity should be our center? And that has been very difficult to grapple with, to grapple with. I have heard, just in my conversations, extreme views all around this conversation, and I've heard majority very balanced approaches. And as you all know, I, you know, drafted a statement that I wanted each of you all to review, and as I woke up the next day after sleeping on it, I realized that there were triggers all in that statement. And I tried to be as balanced as possible in reflecting the many conversations, the members of synagogues, the rabbis, the organizations, the, you know, Muslims and Jews alike. And what I kept coming back to, or what I really wanted to come back to is, you know, number one, my priority is ensuring that Jews and Muslims alike are safe in Durham and ensuring that our, you know, our obligation is what we can take action with in the premises of Durham. But I also know that there are people who live in Durham who hurt and feel for those around the world. There are people who live in Durham who have families and friends around the world. And I shared remarks at an event, and I, you know, I mentioned how complicated it was to just understand this whole matter. And I was blasted. I was blasted. They said, "How dare you say it's complicated." Well, let me tell you what I mean. What I mean is, as a black man growing up in America, there's one oppression that I'm familiar with. And that oppression is when my ancestors came across the seas on a ship and were enslaved. That is what I grew up, and that was the oppression that I was familiar with. I did not know, as a matter of fact, when I grew up, I didn't know that there were any other people other than black and white and poor. When I came to Durham, I started meeting other people from around the world. And that's when I started growing in appreciation. So someone who's not familiar with other oppressions, but is putting in effort to understand and to grow in appreciation, I think the first thing we have to do is have grace. We have to create space for that understanding. And so there, the things that I heard today, you know, in regards to a ceasefire, was also worker wages. Regarding workers' wages, employee wages, we are doing a pay study. And that pay study is going to provide us with information to make a choice based on the market. And we have to have that information before we make any type of final decision. We have to have that data in front of us. As far as directly funding a war as a taxpayer privately, we have taxes that go to a lot of things, and you can look at it that way, but there is no budget line item in Durham that is funding anywhere, any war around the world. And I want to make sure that that is really clear, that the Durham City Council does not have a budget line item, but as an individual, that is a matter. So what I want to ask you all, as we come to this, you know, this, because I do think that we need to respond in some type of way, if you all would be okay with us taking time, set aside, where we can have, you know, who is in this small group that can help us come up with an actual statement or resolution that is inclusive and holistic of what we have heard as a council? Allow us to have a space, and whether, I don't want you all as individuals, I don't want myself as an individual, just blurting it out there and creating division, but actually taking some time, maybe four hours, set aside for us to really hone in on this issue. Because I've talked to each of you all individually, and I know that there is, it's not a full consensus on one approach, but everybody wants to do something about it. And I would like to just create space for us to address it and then bring that back before the council, and then we state a response. But just signing off blindly to what someone else has, you know, placed out there, I think will have larger repercussions that we will have to deal with. Would you all be open to that? Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you all just having grace and allowing us to address this. Leadership is uncomfortable, and you never make everyone happy, but also silence is loud. And I appreciate you all for that. We are adjourned at 3:13 PM. Bull City Strong. Thank you all.